She can start.
I don't want that. Why is it doing that at the same time? What was on that one? Who knows? See if they're going this way.
Yeah, I'm going. Good, we're hands down.
All right, thank you, everybody. Good evening. This is the Town Board Work Meeting for June the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. If you could all please come in for the break. Thank you, everybody. Okay, let me. A couple of commenters later, so I'll address it later. Okay, so for Supervisors' Report, we have a number of things going on right now. More things than I can list. The big resolution for town hall renovations has been pulled from the docket. Has been pulled from the docket because Delaware Engineering couldn't give me the bid specs in time. So I'd rather get that going so we get the bids out and get the renovations going before the costs go up too much more. As I pointed out in previous meetings, the original grant was for a hundred and fifty thousand. It was from twenty nineteen. And costs have gone up. So a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, excuse me, is worth how much now?
It's a W.
But it's, it's not going to buy what it could have. So the sooner we get this done, the better. So I want to have that for the next meeting. They promised me for this one. And so I'm going to be up with Delaware Engineering on Tuesday morning. So we'll address it there amongst other things. Okay. I've been going to the EMS Supervisors' Meeting. It's a county meeting. The whole purpose of it is somewhat nebulous, but we've been having lots of conversation. I don't know where it's going to go. Certainly, we only have a recommendation role, a role of an advisory role, better way to put it. The decision, I believe, rests in the hands of the county legislature. So we're going to have another meeting on the seventh of July in the evening. We had one on the fifth of July, oh, June, so we're proceeding accordingly. Next, we have our PDD discussions have restarted after a small timeframe interval. That's the, the PD, by the way, there's two PDDs I'll get into. The one is the project down at the Shady Arbor Marina. And the water, bringing water to them. As well as a few other things that relate. But that's the main thing. Forty homes is what they're looking to put in. So that is back on the docket. We may have some action on that rather soon from the Town Board, because it's not in the planned board status right now. And we're also, oh, the other PDD, so I can mention it, is the the Planned Development District on behalf of the truck stop. Existing truck stop, they're looking to renovate that thing, A to Z. Absorb more land. Put in a, an apartment complex.
Really?
Well, it could be condos. I mean, they have a number of housing units is a better way to put it. How you would describe it as a apartment complex or what?
They used to be a motel there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And so that's a complex project as well and a lot of moving parts. And of course, we're still waiting for the start date with our water district number two. Which is part of what we're going up to Delaware Engineering on Tuesday for. The the water district number two, we've had some updates in our costs. Of course. We have in our ARPA funds, two hundred and
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight thousand, thank you. The cost is now up to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Which gives us a gap of twenty thousand dollars. Well, the good thing is that back in twenty twenty, yeah, kind of twenty twenty, we, through recommendations, had instituted a twenty dollars per quarter per parcel. O and M, operations and maintenance charges in case something goes wrong. Well, that fund after is pulling in somewhere in the neighborhood of three thousand dollars a year. And after five years, we have about fifteen thousand. So now the gap is about about five. Give or take a room. So it depends on the interest rates this month or that kind of thing. So we're going to be really close. And I have to tell you that we may need to loan them some money. The water district. The town is not allowed to pay for the cost of the water district. The district has to pay. We can loan them money. And the loaning of the money by rules have to be paid within one year. That's the code. So being five thousand dollars is a lot more doable as a gap than yeah, heavier dollars. But that's what we're trying to do. I'm trying to keep that as little as possible. The truth is, between now and next year, as I said, we'll, we'll be bringing in a few more dollars. We have some other billing that has to happen this year. And then you have some billings for next year. So we ought to make it, but it's going to be close. We don't want to put them in any more debt than they've been. The only issue I'll have is if we use up the O and M money, what if something goes wrong? If a fire hydrant needs to be replaced, that's twelve grand. Yeah. It's a Hobson's choice. Clearly. All right, so that's my Supervisors' Report for today. I want to go on to County Legislature.
You got a couple of more things?
Yeah.
I do. Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, fine, fine. Okay, the monthly financial report is from May. I've been forward it to all the board members. And I hope everyone's had a chance to review them. I'm going to make a motion to accept.
Or second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I also think it should be mentioned that the Cornell Hook and Ladder Company had three trophies. That's what I was told. At the Hudson Valley Volunteer Fire Association Convention Parade on, in Lake George last week. Not this one past, but previous. Best overall ladies, best appearing fire unit dress uniform. And nineteenth to twenty-five in line and second best drum line. And also congratulations to the Highway Department who received the recognition for outstanding achievement and innovation. To the, they got a lot of letters here. NYS LTAP CLRP twenty-twenty-five Go the Better Mouth Trap Competition. Their low-profile deer receiver platform. Who would have thought of such a thing?
It's just a metal platform that slides into the receiver on the back of the truck. So if you want to pick up a deer, throw it up into the back of the truck. You just go throw it on there and away you go. One guy could actually do it.
It says allows one person to drag the carcass onto the platform instead of lifting it into a truck. The screen line, this screen likes to process, enables quicker time and reduces the risk of injury. Absolutely. I can just see the backs breaking. You know, I'm surprised you haven't had one already. But I'll leave it at that. Well, congratulations to all. So now I'll go to County Legislature.
For real this time. All right, thank you, Jeff. Welcome to summer. We're here. In the month of June, I've attended eight committee meetings, three workshops, an RC Sportsman's Youth Fishing Derby, and our regular legislative meeting. We'll have our grand opening for the new Green County Tourism Office on July third, two thousand and twenty-five, at eleven a.m. Location is at twenty-three B in Leeds across from Catsville Throughway Exit where the old Stewart's was. The renovation of the former Stewart's shop is complete. And we're proud to show off our new space at the Gateway to Green corridor. Next up for this location will be the New Hampton Inn. This is a fairly light month for agenda items, relatively speaking. Paving for one point four-four miles of County Route Fifty-four between Highmount Road and County Route Fifty-one was approved. You can expect culvert replacements to take place soon in that area. County Route sixty-one road slide and bridge replacement and on the area of the Kukxaki Creek is in the design stage and still working through some right-of-way issues. The RFP is out for a vendor to handle short-term rentals for the county. Services will include address identification, registration service, compliance monitoring, education and outreach. This will provide valuable data for economic development, housing needs and property development, as well as other potential services. Work continues on our Justice Center with an expected move-in date of March of two thousand and twenty-six. Architectural Services and Construction Management Services contracts have been awarded for the new Community Services Building in Carroll. People have increased costs. We plan to move Green County's soil and water and the Vet-to-Vet program on this, to this campus as well. As Jeff mentioned, the countywide ambulance task force continues to forge ahead. Town supervisors met and gave a report to us with their requests and potential timeline. And while nothing's been finalized yet, I am encouraged to say we have a vast majority of towns, legislators and EMS providers all rowing in the same direction for the first time in my service as a legislator. The hope is to use the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six seasons to begin a merger of sorts with Green EMS Paramedics and the county to start a transition that will provide a sustainable system and build career paths. In two thousand and twenty-seven, we would then bring transporting agencies into the mix as county employees. There are many details to be worked out still, not the least of which is the effect of the Baltimore Fire District, number one, currently serviced by Ravina Rescue in Albany County. Response times and service levels are important aspects being considered. One of the goals here is to get consistent ALS transport service everywhere in Green County. And we'll get there, but not without some serious work and growing pains. We affirmed our commitment to this goal with a resolution this month to declare EMS as an essential service in Green County. In New York State, where police and fire protection are essential, EMS is not. This is a commitment we've asked our state representatives to do on multiple occasions without success. I believe we're the first county to do so. I also provided two Steenberg Grants this month to RC Sportsman's Club for the Youth Fishing Derby and another one for the New Baltimore Ag Fest. One thing that I neglected to put on this report. The State Assembly wrapped up its business last week. And one of the things that we were told was not going to come through in the new legislation for this year and come out of session was the ability for municipalities to remove EMS costs in their tax gap. We were told last month that was a dead issue. It wasn't going anywhere. Well, in the, in the waiting hours, it passed the Senate and it passed the Assembly and it's heading to the governor's desk. Basically, what that would do, we were looking at approximately a twenty percent increase in our property taxes for the county if the EMS system were to come in as all expenses at once. We were a little concerned with that number, obviously. This would allow us to not have to pass the resolution saying we're going to reach the tax gap because it will take those, those costs of EMS, providing EMS service out of that calculation. So if the governor signs it, it'll be a good thing for us and help us out a little bit. Doesn't mean we're not going to spend extra money because no matter what, we're going to spend extra money. But we're going to put together a decent system and something that we can be proud of. Any questions?
I think I'll, I'll point out something. You talked a little bit about the EMS Task Force, Ambulance Task Force. Some of the things that we brought up here in previous meetings and also was conversed about during the Supervisors' Meeting was, and I brought it forward, and that is it has every appearance that the costs to the residents of the town of Baltimore are going to be on the increase. The estimate that we got from the Grodens office, County
Administration.
Yeah, Administration's Office was it would be two hundred and fifteen thousand and that would be assessment-based.
Right. Yeah, I don't think this will be cheaper at all.
Well, cheaper than what?
Cheaper than what New Baltimore is paying now.
No, we've been paying ninety-five.
Right.
So the issue that I brought out is it seems, based upon the estimates we've been provided, it's going to go from ninety-five to about two fifteen. And it's different avenue for payment, absolutely. It's going to be, you know, instead of via the town tax, it's going to be a county tax.
Correct.
And the issue and worry we have is we're also worried about something you kind of alluded to here and that we may end up with less services than what we had if the plan goes forward.
There won't, there won't be any less services.
Well, how about longer, I mean, in essence, we wouldn't have, Ravina Rescue Squad is not, according to the information at my meeting, is not part of the plan.
I don't know if they're not part of the plan. Their, their numbers are in all of our assessment right now. The numbers are there for their call volume, their response times, all that.
But the ambulance provider?
With the ambulance provider. If need be, if, if we can't come up with a way within the countywide system to meet the same response times that everybody else is getting, we can contract with Ravina to say, okay, you guys handle these calls up here until we can get enough people on board and enough ambulances because quite frankly, I don't think that ambulance is going to do what needs to be done to begin with. I think this will be a bigger, a bigger system than, than what was proposed.
Well, that's more reassuring than the info I got at my meetings because they said that's not in the picture. However, I don't want to suppose they know everything.
Yeah, and I talked to the chief in, in those Travis as well and let him know the same thing, that this isn't going to be a thing where we're just going to wind up dropping you guys. We're, we're going to need them for probably the next three years, I would think.
When I was, didn't say well, but I meant by being less, I mean, their rescue squad is two miles from our kind of line. And the Kukxaki rest ambulance is depends on where in town you are, is a great deal further and that I would be worried about response times.
Yeah, I can't tell you where any new stations would be.
Yeah, that's true.
That's going to be up to the administration for the new ambulance service. So if they want to get rid of a couple of buildings that are already in use and put something on nine W or on eighty-one or something there, it's going to change all of that. It's all formulas. It's fairly easy to figure out. Green EMS has done it with extramedic trucks and and that's how the whole county right now is on that response time of just over nine minutes.
Right. And so of course, the last thing I want to do is talk about County Route sixty-one. And I don't know what the design stage will, the outcome will be, but is there any idea of the work when that will be accomplished? Or are we not this year type of work date?
The slide will be done this year. The bridge will probably wind up in the twenty-six season.
So obviously, we need to make sure the public knows.
Yeah, right now, they're trying to get the whole thing situated as to how that angle on the bridge is going to go, the width of it. They've got to put an in-place detour that's there that's going to actually go over. We need a right-of-way clearance on the one house that's there and that's kind of where the holdup is right now. They have an agreement, but we don't have a signed document. So without it, I can't move forward and it's kind of held up. The, they're mostly done with the design based on it. They're waiting on right-of-way.
Thanks, Ben. Anybody else?
Patrick? Yes, I have a question and I was going to present it to the board, but the idea of changing the senior program for food services. I happened to get a message from John in Florida reading the article in the Porcupine newspaper about how they want to cut back on a lot of the services for seniors. Some of whom are housebound. I understand from what I read that they are cutting back on the people that deliver the meals to some of our housebound. And it goes on in quite a bit of changes. For some of the people, I mean, when they think it's so easy, well, if you can't drive and you need this service, see if you can get a friend to drive you. Well, I don't know how much driving that lady does who designed this idea. But I used to drive for the department for the age and I used to have to run two runs in a single day because we didn't have the backing. I don't, I don't see where this is going to help any of the people that have paid taxes in this town or this county almost all their lives.
Yeah, and it's not just here. This was based off of the reimbursement rates that were changed from the federal government. The line item right now is actually zero for meals and meals.
Yeah.
So we get no federal reimbursement. So all of that cost then would have to be borne by us on top of what we're already paying. It's about a million eight here in Green County.
Well, I understand there was some mention about, well, the county is paying for this and the county is paying for that. And one of the areas that they accused the county of paying for from what I gathered of the site in Kukxaki where I go, that is paid for by the village, that building.
No, we leased that space.
Well, that's not the way the seniors have always been in.
It's twelve hundred dollars a month. I can tell you we leased the space.
Okay, that's what I think we need to know because not everybody knows the statistics.
Yeah, the second one, another one that we have, we pay a thousand dollars a month for jule. You know how many people eat that jule?
Yeah, three.
Last week was one.
Well, yeah.
We're paying twelve hundred dollars a month.
In Kukxaki, there is a definite, two people that I know are, that is their main meal in that room.
Yeah, they're going off of the State Office of Aging standards, which were supposed to go in place two years ago after COVID. They did away with the meals for everybody. It didn't matter whether you met the standards or not. They did away with that. The problem was our director at Department of Aging in Green County at the time did not make those changes. So for two years, we've actually been footing that bill. And when our new executive director, actually it was the interim executive director, came in and she went, where are all these expenses going? Why am I not getting reimbursed? Come to find out, we still had almost four or over four of them.
Well, I think you're good. I don't care where the money comes from, but from my understanding of money, and I do know money, I don't think you can just cut off the name, the head of the person and say, oh, well, you're on your own. You might be eighty or ninety years old or maybe you're only sixty-five or sixty-eight, but we can't help you.
Yeah, no, I think it was rolled out wrong. Don't get me wrong.
I'm not saying it is right. I'm asking you to make sure that what they're anticipating is not going to hurt the people that I know some of in Kukxaki. It just, and people come, we have people come from Ravina down, but people from Kukxaki go up through Ravina. It's a pleasurable thing to be social for seniors when they're at a, well, you know from experience.
That's the purpose of the whole program.
Okay.
Great. Janet, Carol?
Quick question on, now that we're going to be a essential service, is that going to open up anything for us in terms of reimbursement?
Unless the state does it, no. Basically, what it would do is, my fear is that before we can start this, another town suddenly says, I can't afford to do this anymore.
Yep.
We're not going to do it. That would then at least give up us the authorization to say, okay, then we're going to step in and cover the costs. I can't have somebody in the county being without EMS service. Just not a good thing. So.
That was well expressed in my meetings as well. They were worried about some leg of that, of the current system collapsing.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple of towns right now who are absolutely over their head in what they can afford and it's not going to get cheaper. And reimbursement rates from Medicare, Medicaid, insurance companies, they're just, they're not covering the bills.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Town Clerk's Report. Jess, are you going to read that or you want us to do that?
I can read it.
Proceed.
Alrighty. There was one CO search compliance residential for one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Twelve building permits for two thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. One EC pass tag for twenty-five dollars. Three fishing licenses, nine dollars and forty-three cents. Nineteen dog licenses at a hundred and fifty even. Eight lake dog licenses at forty dollars. Two demolition permits for a hundred and fifty. Two park rentals at fifty dollars total. One special use variance, non-commercial, one hundred dollars. Thirty-six certified copies, three hundred and sixty dollars. Total state, county and local revenues, four thousand six hundred thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents. Thirty-one dollars to New York State Department of Agricultural, Agriculture and Markets for the Spay Neuter Program. Six hundred and forty dollars and fifty-seven cents to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for fishing licenses. Total to the supervisor, three thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. The town clerk's office collected three million eighty-six thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents in taxes. Six thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents in penalties. One return check fee of twenty dollars. Notice fees of thirty dollars for a total of three million ninety-two thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents, representing eighty-one percent collected. The remaining uncollected is seven hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. For Water Districts two and three, we are currently collecting sixteen percent penalty for the third quarter. Ten percent for the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. Four percent for the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five until July fifteenth. Super one is collecting with a ten percent penalty until July fifteenth. Renovation and construction of the new records room downstairs is underway. Our vendor for archiving the records has also started the process. Also, just reminding everyone that Amanda Eldred, Deputy Town Clerk, is a member of the National Guard and was activated by the governor late in February. Please keep her in your thoughts and we hope she will return to us soon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have minutes from July nine, June, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. I hope you all had the chance to review them. I'm going to make a motion to accept the July nine minutes.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Okay, this is, you had something, Janet, for animal control?
Yes, I do. And Barb will have this in her email. This is our report from Sherri Vieta, our Dog Control Officer. We try to do this once every three months, so this is March through the end of June. And let's see, on April first, a shepherd was found at the Welcome Center at the Throughway. The owner was found and it was returned. On April ninth, Sherri got a call about a raccoon at eighty-six Old Oilfield Road. The owner was advised to call the E C or the state police since we don't deal with oil animals.
He'll be Oldfield.
Is that what it says? It says Old Oilfield.
I don't know.
I heard an oil field.
Oldfield, we do have one of those.
Well, we may have more than one.
Oh, that must be it then. On May sixth, new On May sixth, New Baltimore paramedics requested assistance at a owner's own, at an owner's home, I think. It was on River Road. The owner went to the hospital. The paramedics came and took the gentleman to the hospital. But there was a dog and a cat in the house, and a neighbor took both to foster until and if the homeowner can come back to take care of them. On May sixteenth, received a call about the dog Whiskey. That was that little black dog that was running around by one forty-four.
Still up.
Yeah. And missing from Route one forty-four. On May twenty-seventh, got a call from Whiskey's owners. The dog was spotted on King's Road. A trap was set, which was there until May twenty-ninth. And Whiskey was trapped and returned to the owner by Jill Blenamstein, who was a local tracker, trapper, sorry, out of Selkirk. So Whiskey's safe. And on May thirtieth, Sherry picked up a dog on Highmount Road, which was returned to owner. And that's that report.
All right, thank you.
That's that for now.
Okay. Did you have anything for Ag questions?
Oh, well, it was just everything went well except for the weather, but other than that, it was good.
I'm sorry I bypassed you. We don't have anything for assessments that I know of. Building grounds and recycling, that would be Councilwoman Downs.
Monthly report for June, five twenty-nine, twenty-five to six twenty-three, twenty-five. Tires up to and including sixteen inch with rim one, five dollars. Sixty gallon bags of plastic, eight bundles of magazines and phone books, seven bags and bundles of newspaper, twenty-eight, boxes and bundles of cardboard, forty-four. Free appliances, six twenty-one, we have one air conditioner, six four, we had a refrigerator.
All right, thank you. You have the next one, which is the Code Enforcement Officer.
Summarization of Code Enforcement activities for June 2025. Building inspection, twenty-seven. Total new building permit applications received, three. Total building permits issued, five. Certificates of compliance issued, two. Certificates of occupancy search request, two. Total complaints received, one. Total complaints resolved, one. Building permit renewal letter sent, eight. Building permit renewals, one. Open building permits, two hundred and twelve. Building department fees for May twenty-eighth through June tenth, one thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Fees year-to-date, fourteen thousand ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Alan Jordan.
Thank you. Okay, fire EMS and law enforcement. Mr. Dallas Santi, please.
The Green County EMS regular meeting was held on Tuesday, June seventeenth. There were seventeen EMS calls in May for a total of ninety-six for this year. Twenty twenty-four, we had two hundred and forty-three calls. We're on pace for about two thirty right now, so we're down from last year, which is a good thing. Year-to-date strokes were forty-four in Green County and overdoses were twenty-five for all of Green County.
Thank you, sir.
I got a quick grant report for the next one.
Oh, okay, grants, promotions. Second number to go.
On Friday afternoon, we had applied for the Chippies Grant about six weeks ago, I guess it was. And I got an email on Friday afternoon that the good news is that they, they're going to give us a grant. The bad news is it's not for the ninety-six thousand dollars that we asked for. We got to put in a number of projects for highway, parks, the canoe, canoe thing, the flagpole, the sign for the park, but we're going to have to make some decisions. They're giving us thirty thousand dollars, which is, like you say, not a, not a bad poke in the eye. But it's better than nothing.
We did kind of load it up, didn't we?
Oh, yeah. Two projects for highway, one was for the radios and one was for the garage doors. So I'd like you to make a decision on, I think the radios are probably the most important. It's up to you, but you don't have to answer that today, but think about it. And I know you want to do the playground for the Cornell Park.
Right.
That's twenty-two thousand dollars. So let's just say you happen to pick the radios for twenty and twenty-two, we're twelve thousand dollars short. But we do have enough in the park reserve account to cover that twelve thousand dollars if that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
Don't have to make the decision today. I have to let this Mr. Andrew Rush know which way you want to go, but they will give us the thirty thousand dollars to the town and we can use it for the projects that you, you want. But you guys discuss what, which one you want to do and let me know next week. Okay.
On a related note, I had let folks know that there was, I applied for and was informed we'd have a grant through PERMA for a, an education equipment center, whatever they call it.
It's here.
And it came in last week. And what it is, is a laptop that's dedicated to training events. Loaded up already, but you can add others. And it's a laptop dedicated to that. And also a flat screen TV, which came in our middle last week. And we're looking to put it up behind the curtain right up here so that people could see what it is. And of course, I said, if we have other needs, like if we have a budget presentation, we could, we could, we could use it as well. So that just came in, so.
And just a thought.
Okay, one more time. Who, you go ahead.
Cut me.
Your alphabet was correct.
Alphabetally correct. It's not my decision to decide how this grant is carved up in the end, but I do know that the garage doors at the Highway Department have become a, a threat, public safety threat, a worker threat. They're kind of falling off. So in your deliberations about that, I would think that from the public safety, safety aspect, that that might be something we would consider highly in your deliberations.
That's something else.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Exactly. That's what I said.
I had a similar comment because I know also Barb asked for a window of protective safety glass. I didn't know how it would be prioritized based on safety or what the, how it would be, or the whole safety.
I think that.
That's what I'm, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, no deference to Barb's thoughts. I kind of think that fixing a door might take precedence over putting in a new window. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, and that's what I was just asking how we make this.
Amongst other things, yeah. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, well, speaking of highway.
Hey, highway report, May twenty-sixth to June twentieth, twenty twenty-five. I cut paving rebates on West Angels Mill Road and Wyndham Roads. Paved West Angels Mill Road and Wyndham Roads, backed up driveways after paving. Installed shoulders on newly paved roads. Thank you to Green County Highway Department for the use of their shoulder machine and an operator for three days. Alped drove the laptop. Thank you to the New York State Theory Maintenance Division for the loan of their hot box. Installed fabricated grape over the culvert pipe on Gil Road to eliminate the dangerous culvert so children or animals can no longer go in it. Mowed along roads, road parks and town hall as needed. Went to FabCon to look at concrete slabs for kayak launch at Cornell Park. Repaired damage to the gazebo at Cornell Park. Repaired leaking hydraulic pipe on roadside boom mower. Replaced leaking oil pan on twenty thirteen International Truck Number Seven. Moved boxes of records at town hall, picked up orange bags after roadside cleanup. And I had on air the recognition for the better ground strap, but I've already ducked it up.
Sorry, I didn't need to steal you.
No, it's okay.
No, no, no offense intended. Quick question about Mike. What happened to Cornell Park, the gazebo?
Some kid went in there with either a hatchet or a machete or something and chopped up the seat, one of the seats.
When did that happen? I never heard of that.
Three weeks ago? So we got, we took some boards down and put them back together.
Yes, I was just down there. Beforehand, apparently.
And what, the thing is, somebody that lives in Cornell Hall, the big, big yellow apartment building, saw the person, knew who it was, called the sheriff. The sheriff did a report. There's a preliminary report. It doesn't really have much information on it. There should be a secondary one coming, they said, with more information on it, his name, whatever.
He's underage. I won't tell you.
I think he's only like fifteen or something.
Get him to.
That's the age, isn't it?
Make him work his butt off.
Now that you've put the grate over the culvert on Gil Road, is there any more discussion about what needs to go forward or is the car?
Well, he was happy with the grate. That took care of the danger problem. But he's still not happy with the ditch running across this property.
From, along the road?
From the road, across his property to where this culvert is, which has been here since probably a hundred years, way longer than I've been here. That ditch is going down through there. He wants us to move it, standing and heading south, looking out of Gil Road, to the left and run it, run it down the other, the end of his property and connect it to the pipe that's already there.
By where the tree line is?
Yeah. But we're talking minimum of fifteen thousand dollars to do that. How do we buy all the pipe?
This sounds like it handles the emergency that was, not emergency, but the condition.
Danger that a kid or animal might have.
All right. So far, so good. All right, thank you very much, sir. Okay, let's go on down the line. How about planning board?
Planning board met on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, in which the following business was transacted. Tortoise Ventures LLC Minor Subdivision. A public hearing was held regarding the minor subdivision for, right?
Tortoise Ventures.
Ventures LLC on Old Kings Road with one member of the public offering comment regarding the terrain of the land and the depth of the wells in the area. Chem Gas Station Convenience Store, Kevin Holter Rock.
I gave you a good one, didn't I?
Yes, nice. And Colin Parsons were present, representing Mr. Chem. Chem, also in attendance was the town's designated engineer, Camille.
Really?
Brandon Wick?
Brandon Wick.
Brandon Wick.
Crichton Manning. The board reviewed all the conditions that were on the resolution with all parties determining that most of the conditions would have to be met before a building permit could be secured. An in-depth conversation was had on the well and septic for the project and the state and county agencies that they will need approval from, from moving forward. All questions and concerns were addressed. The planning board read the resolution with conditions. There was a motion to approve the site plan with all board members in attendance in favor and motion carried. Culver Meredith Lot Line Adjustment. After review of the conveyance deed from the town's attorney and further review of the maps by the planning board, the Culver Meredith Lot Line Adjustment was approved with all board members in attendance in favor. The maps were stamped and signed for filing with the Green County Clerk's Office, Robyn Bennett and Chair.
Thank you. Okay, town courts, that would be?
That would be me.
Councilwoman Cash.
Yep. Two New Baltimore Town Board from Honorable James W. Huff, Honorable Anthony C. Consul, subject monthly town court report, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The following is the town of New Baltimore Court Monthly Report for May twenty twenty-five. Total May monies received was twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Of this, Honorable James W. Huff, six thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Honorable Anthony C. Consul, six thousand seventy-three dollars. Total twenty, twenty-five monies received, January through May, sixty-seven thousand fifty dollars. Total new cases received, one oh eight. We sometimes get state, state report, but Barb usually gets that. I don't think we have it today, so that's cool.
All right, thank you. So Chairwoman Danedin, do you have anything for Ben?
We are having the annual picnic at the end of July. I'm not remembering the exact date off the top of my head. I think it's the third week, Sunday, nineteenth. Not sure off the top of my head. I forget what date.
I would say it's probably the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
That's the last week of July.
No, it's the third week.
Third, okay, then.
Saturday nineteenth.
Sunday.
Sunday, it's twenty-third.
Waste water treatment, anything for Councilwoman Salama?
No.
In water districts, I've made mention of the, the anticipated start of our water line placement. Youth Parks and Recreation, while not terribly related, we do now have the, the camera system in at the District Two Park. Sounds like we need it at Cornell Park.
Yeah, we need to get a lot of places. There's been a lot of vandalism this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, what did they do most recently, Alan? They took the grate off.
Oh, yeah, that too. That big, there's a giant metal grate. I mean, it's, I work with, I work with steel drainage tray at Cornell Park. Somebody took it off, carried it down and put it in water.
Oh, God.
Guy had to go down, him and another guy, get it, drag it back up there and put it back up.
It's not just the town, though. I know that one of our neighbors had a backhoe loader, one of those in the field, and some kids got back there with baseball bats.
Oh, God.
Broke out the windows, ripped the tires. They did have cameras and they caused them. Because somebody, another kid knew who they were and turned them in.
Part of the problem with getting cameras that work is that you have to have Wi-Fi. Now, the good thing over the, what's that?
Power and one or the other.
Yeah, the, we're just, over at the Howard Park, we have, they're actually piggybacking on the highway garage. And they're, you know, internet systems. So I'm hopeful that maybe with the wastewater treatment plant, there's a means by which they can piggyback there. I don't know, but I'll talk to our contractor, Rodney, and maybe we can do something there. Because it sounds like there's more issues there than, of course, they come and go.
Walked in there in the dark. He didn't know that great location. They looked everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, problems at either site have, you know, there've been, now that we've had the camera, there've been no incidents. And by the way, that's important for you, yourselves and anyone else. In terms of our video backup, we can only look back two weeks.
There you go.
Oh, this isn't so important for the minutes. It's important for, you know, information.
Right.
That we can only look back two weeks. So if you know of something, let me know. We can pull it up on the camera. If you tell me after two weeks has gone by, I can't do anything with it. So, you know, and, so anyway, that's more informational as opposed to important for the minutes. Okay. Zoning Board Appeals, we'll wait till the cameras or the tapes are ready.
I don't know. Do they have a meeting?
It also sounds like there's something going on with people stealing people's garbage cans right now.
Oh, God.
Yeah, that's another thing that they're, we're going to do is on that. We've actually found some of them. Found out they're going to run back.
It's just a certain.
Stealing garbage cans and taking them down the road or on another road and dumping them off.
It's just a certain company for some reason.
Yeah, and they wonder things that.
Is there a location or is it throughout town?
Oh, they're all around.
I hope so.
We found two of them in the middle of school hill. They belong to Walters who live over on that road.
Hey, it's your second job. Delivery.
It's a particular kind of criminal to steal garbage.
They must have something against the company. I don't know.
Okay, let's proceed. Zoning Board of Appeals, Councilwoman Salama.
The Zoning Board of Appeals met on June fourth, twenty twenty-five, in which the following business was transacted. Bone Kiselov Area Variance. Mr. Bone was present. He had authorized Agent Mr. Kiselov submit an application for an area variance. The planning board referred them to the Zoning Board of Appeals to request variances for the subdivision of the land. The current driveway right-of-way located on Mr. Bone's property allows Mr. Kiselov access to his current landlocked parcel. This subdivision does not meet the pre, minimum required lot acreage or the minimum required road frontage for a flaglot. The subdivision of a small zero point two nine one acre non-buildable driveway lot will eventually be joined with the current landlocked parcel located in the town of Kuk Saki via lot line adjustment. The application was accepted and given a negative declaration for the purpose of SECR. A resolution was read and accepted with conditions. A public hearing on the variance was scheduled for July second, twenty twenty-five. A public hearing on the variance was scheduled for July 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 P.M. The public hearing for this variance has since been postponed, awaiting comment from the Green County Planning Board because of the proximity to the town line. Will Walker, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know why the minutes upcoming meetings is on that page, but let's proceed otherwise.
Because it was room.
I suppose that's true. Okay, upcoming meetings, July 2nd, 2025. As you just heard, you have a Z B A meeting at 7:00 P.M. July 4th, we're closed. July 10th, planning board meeting at 7:00 P.M. July 14th, a town board regular meeting at 7:00 P.M. July 28th, town board work meeting at 7:00 P.M. And September 20th, townwide yard sale at 9:00 A.M., starting at 9:00 A.M. So, so I have for that. Has your questions been resolved?
Yes, sir.
Then I'll put that aside. Okay. The next part of this, we have a resolution to accept the order of claims. This is Resolution 103 of 2025. Resolution to authorize supervisor to pay order of claims. Whereas Town Clerk has presented claims to the town board for order and review. And whereas the town board has ordered claims 2025B-01 to 2025B-306-35, it is resolved that the supervisor is hereby authorized to pay claims 2025B-06-01 to 2025-6-35. Be a further resolve of Town Clerk over parent affract and hold for public review until July 31st of 2025. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Are all those in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. I'll read the dollars. General, $14,321.82. Highway, $437,000.
No. No. I can't be right.
We paid for the payment.
Oh, you, that's just the payments in this one?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Never mind.
For those watching on TV, yes. Highway, $437,423.99. Street lighting, number one, $1,774.58. Street lighting, number two, $206, $206.60. Ambulance, number one, is $5,085.99. Ambulance two is $2,987.1. Total, $461,799.90. And I think that ends the night.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Motion made in second. Are all those in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I don't know that you know, but things.
All right. Just so you all know, the owl was still on.
Thanks, Tony. I'm here, man. All very easy to get to there.
Just want, you know.